Good evening, everybody. It looks like we're short a board member en route. Before it gets later, thank you, everyone, board, staff, community, for making some time tonight for another dedicated work session around how we want to make sure and continue thinking about and iterating our process for developing a vision for Portland Public Earlier in conversations with the board and senior leadership, we agreed that developing a vision is probably one of the most important products we can have as a deliverable for this school year. And that's critically important to have as a priority because if you don't know where you're looking to arrive at, it doesn't really matter what road you take. You know, you kind of proceed doing your work, but it's good to have a north star around where you're going. And you can't really define that just as staff, just as an elected official. You have to hear from a cross-section of stakeholders, families, parents, folks who were here served around what they desire for their children, to hear from industry leaders and other folks who live in the city of Portland around what they believe the school system should be producing in the way of a graduate with skills and dispositions where they can be leaders in our community as a next generation. So I'm grateful for the board's deep interest in thinking about how do we begin to charret that as a broader community? How do we capture that in a way that will captivate all stakeholders that folks can get excited and nod to? Yeah, that's a good thing. That's what we want to shoot for. That aspiration will help to provide for us as staff an important roadmap and strategic plan over time about how we will get there in a stepwise fashion. So this really is an important first step that we want to think about before we embark on some of those pieces in the community so that we can maximize the amount of input that in an organized way that the challenges we have to synthesize in the end to get at that deliverable. Having been a part of a similar process in two districts now, I have confidence in our facilitators, who are going to be our shaman for this journey, to help us in each of the steps in this process. We have you grouped today because I think the variety of perspectives are going to be really important and want you to get some of the experience that we're hoping for that happens out there in the community because it's that difference in perspectives that we want to try to find, the common denominator. So we're going to jump into -- hi, Scott. Good evening. I was just saying how important it is to have a vision and how we want everybody's voices. And so now that you're here, I'll ask our board chair to chime in next if she wants to make any remarks as we dive into tonight's meeting.
So I mean, I'm really glad that everybody was able to take this time. It's going to be a long evening, so thank you for coming. And I'm hoping by the end of it, we will come out with actual direction for how we're going to proceed. And I think what we want to come out of tonight with is a really clear sense of like what we want to get out of the visioning process, how we want to organize it, how the board is going to be actively engaged with the process, and kind of how we're going to organize ourselves to make this the best possible process we can come up with. So I think one of the things we're doing tonight is doing a kind of mini guiding coalition session, right?
A mini-something.
A mini-something.
Yeah.
To give a flavor of how they imagine this is going to work. And then by the end of the evening, we'll be talking about how we're going to organize the process writ large. And I guess the last thing is just some housekeeping. So this is a four-hour agenda. Around nine o'clock, so two and a half hours in, we're going to have a kind of natural break in the proceedings at which point public comments, is there going to be any public comments? Okay, if anybody shows up with public comments, it'll have to put on that clock. So, okay, thank you.
So I'll just reiterate, thank you so much for being here. As the project sponsor, I want to just share our enthusiasm. You can see the whole core team is here and the SLT team also make it. So we are really committed to being here. The board's role in this is so critical. And we know we have a number of different paths we could take, so I'm really excited to get clear direction and hear all of your feedback today. So thanks for being here.
I was just wondering if we could do introductions just in case.
Yeah, Stephanie, so.
Luis Valentina, Chief Director of McGirt.
Julie Esparza Brown, Vice Chair for --
Hi, I'm Jill Bryant. I'm an administrator, program administrator in --
[laughter]
In student success and health.
Yvonne Curtis, Deputy Superintendent of Instruction and School Commission.
Camille Borchier.
Camille, like that about --
Jonathan Garcia, Strategic Partnerships.
Craig Wire, Chief of Schools.
Robert Terry, College and Career Readiness.
Lisa Shore, Office Schools.
Reverend Jim Samuels, Community Services.
Gordon Wesley, GR.
Scott Bailey on the board.
Paul Anthony, I'm on the board.
Kalen Mufet, superintendent.
Mike Person, board.
Kimber Neiman, Tier Professional Learning and Leadership.
I'm the Help Board Manager.
Liz Large, Legal.
Julie, from my board's board.
Eddie, does the advisor on equity and social justice.
Toscutt, I can service manager.
Stephanie Cameron, Communications.
David Roy, Communications.
All right. So probably reiterating for the fourth time, I just also want to thank everyone for being here. If you think you're coming here for sort of a regular meeting, I would have you suspend that thinking for a minute because I think this is going to be actually an exciting, all of your sleeves, get to sort of know what the process might look like. I heard words, Chair Moore talk about flavor. I think if we start to think about this being an appetizer portion of kind of what it could look like when the real community engagement sessions happen, that would be probably a good mind frame to have. The caveat on that is a lot of times you might get excited about an activity that we're doing today, and we might rush you through it because they're appetizer sizes. We asked for your forgiveness on that. One of the purposes is to just get a sense of what these activities could look like, really to help support your decision-making later on in the evening. So we also thought that, you know, by having every sort of the core team as well as the SLT involved in this, we all sort of leave this session with a sort of a better understanding of the kinds of things we're talking about when we say, let's do a strategic foresight session, or let's design this in a way that futures might be talked about, and you'll have a sense of what some of those activities will be. Right? So definitely leaving here with a, tonight, some of the outcomes of deeper and better understanding of some of our approaches and tools, so that it's not sort of, you know, left to sort of imagination, develop a better understanding of really the proposed phases of our process. So we definitely have sort of these three phases, and we talk about them, and they're static in the sense that we're planning, and we're doing a large sort of, you know, sort of effort around community engagement, and then we're doing the artifacts. But I think somebody mentioned the journey from one and the other through those three phases can be varied, and it really, we're here to guide and facilitate what the right journey path is for you. So definitely, you know, definitely understand the phases, but the journey process, we're both together. We want to leave here with a clear direction, as Chair Moore said, on your preferred project and stakeholder engagement scenario, and then really with direction further for us to do some further analysis, right, about the implications to timeline and all that. But definitely that clear direction we're looking for. And then also wanting to talk about moving forward, then how do we work more with you as a board? How do we communicate with you? And really, we have some ideas, but really we want to get your input on that and really work out what it is that we want all the board to be engaged in, how often, where, and how, and then also individually. So we want to be able to meet all those needs. I'm going to switch to the next slide, but I realize we didn't introduce ourselves. Sorry. Fiona Homenden, Prospect Studio. And Sonya Looks. Prospect Studio. All right, okay. So quickly, we, you know, implicit in this an agenda, we're going to do a little bit of setting the stage, and then you'll see the vast majority of the first part of the meeting is this mini experience, this appetizer, you know, slices of this vision experience. Then we have sort of the last hour to an hour and a half dedicated to the discussion and then decision-making around the scenarios. And then so that's -- all right, so a few things before we start. So just to reiterate, we have had, we did provide the board members a summary of activities to date, so we're not necessarily reviewing that tonight, just in terms of agenda, not having, you know, wanting to, we're not reviewing that tonight. But obviously, any questions after the session or any time, really, we can definitely answer those and address those separately. Two main goals is a mini experience, and then again, discussion about direction going forward. And needless to say, you've already figured this out, it's a participatory session. We've got, you know, SLT members and core team members here, appetizer portions. I already said all that. All right. This is what I mean is by the phases of the vision process. So, and you'll see that we're really at the beginning stages, right, of really designing and prepping what it is that we want to do. The main event, or the main events, I should say, is a conglomerate of stakeholder engagement sessions, whether they're community engagement sessions at large, whether they are, you know, customized, smaller intimate community engagement sessions, whether it's a guiding coalition. Some of these words I know has been floated around, but that is the piece that we want to be able to design with you. And we haven't really gotten there yet, and so we're going to start that process of thinking about how we want to design that today. And then once those community engagement sessions, stakeholder sessions are done, then we'll go into sort of the writing phase. But when we think about the phases of the vision process, we're really thinking about these three things. And right now, I think it's all great that we're here together, really at the beginning, really trying to decide what that journey map looks like going forward, so that we can actually move forward on the same page and together. All right? Any questions so far? All right. So, sorry, I just need something to -- it's really hard, so I apologize. I know that a lot of us, all of us, really have experience in vision and mission and strategic planning at some parts of our professional career. We're just offering a couple of definitions just to start us off, so that this is something that, you know, we define as, and just to give us a sense of how we're thinking about vision. So vision is an organization's guiding idea, aspirational description that expresses a desired future that the organization wants to bring about in the world. A vision works as a horizon point, or north star, is another word I've heard used in this system, for the organization to move forward collectively. Right? As opposed to mission, so a mission, we think of it as describing what the organization does to reach that vision, right? Well-articulated mission statements, serve as a guide for the decisions and activities or strategies for an organization, whereas a vision paints a really vivid picture, an aspirational picture of a desired future. So a picture of a desired future and what the organization does to get there is how we contrast mission, vision versus mission. And so we have encountered, having done sort of visioning sessions or strategic planning sessions our whole careers in various different industries, there are some challenges that we've experienced with traditional vision process. I'll just say tradition only because I don't really know, you know, traditional is a word that I've come up with, but I'm just curious to know from all of you, like what challenges have you had? And you've experienced sort of past vision sessions in your professional career. When you think about a vision process that was challenging, what was challenging about it?
It never got to the actual implementation of anything, right?
Okay. And it never got to there because?
Many reasons.
Those are the many challenges that we have to deal with, so.
Yeah. Because implementation wasn't built into the process from the beginning. Like it was a, you know, we'd do this big thing, and everybody would spend hours, days, weeks, months on these things, and it never, there was never an, and now what? What's being, and what to do about it?
Yeah, okay. Right.
I think what I've experienced is that some of the best work was reached by the, about three-quarters of the way through the process, and then it got diluted, became less bold, more compromised to get to the end. And so the end product wasn't as good as what we had as we were getting there.
Okay, great. Impact versus intent. So a vision that sounds great in theory, but that end consumer or the first man is most affected, it doesn't have the same intention as, you know.
Right. There must have been, there might have been good intention at the beginning, but then when you got to the point of looking at how it impacted people, there's a little bit of a gap.
It becomes, my experience is it becomes a statement, and so we work through what's that one sentence that we want to have everywhere?
I definitely have that expectation.
And I hate that because it's not, that's not a vision.
Yeah, yeah. Let's take a couple more, and then we'll move on.
All the stakeholders couldn't come to agreement, or else some people weren't as committed as others.
Okay, okay.
I was going to build off that and say, because so many people have different ideas and they can't come together, that it becomes maybe really long and jumbled in trying to meet
Meet everybody's.
Everybody's vision, so run on something.
Run on something, so especially when you're trying to wordsmith something like Jonathan was pointing out. So I don't know if, it seems like some of you might have read my next slide, which I know not everybody has. So some challenges that I know I have been a part of, traditional approaches, the focus sometimes become on trying to address present failures only, when it really needs to be a both-and, right? So you want to create sort of this clear aspiration of the future, and then think about how solving the issues of today can be part of your forward path to that aspirational future. So we want to do a both-and, and we don't want to just focus on the current day, right? Inputs and decisions are often made by groups who are not always representative diversity of the people impacted. Not quite what you were saying, Camille, but together with, even when inputs are gathered, sometimes the vetting and decision-making done by narrow group sometimes leads to wordsmithing or watering down the statements. You know, there's, there's a lot to be said about, and this is why I think when you experience some of our, what seems like never-ending iterative process, the reason why we do that sometimes is because it's so important to pick out the nuances of what stakeholders are saying. It's really important not to wordsmith it to a point where it becomes, it's clear, but then all the subtlety and the importance of what's really trying to get conveyed is lost. And so you don't want to spend hours watering down or wordsmithing, you want to spend hours making sure you understand the nuances of what all the stakeholders are trying to say, and thinking about how do we make sure the intent of what we're saying in our vision is actually captured so that, and check in, check in with the stakeholders and say, well, if we say it like this, does it actually resonate with you? Right? We can't just assume that it resonates just because we think we did a good job trying to wordsmith it just right. And sometimes when you do that, you actually spend a significant amount of effort, like rolling out the vision through sort of understanding sessions, rather than engaging community and engaging the stakeholders that are impacted upfront. So we say go slow to go fast. It's really important to get that engagement upfront and not at the end when you've done some wordsmithing on your, on your words, on your visions. All right, so, so how can we create a different approach? How can we reimagine? How might we imagine even some process that's different? How do we actually get to that? If our aspiration is to kind of not do that, but do what we want, this is where I think our practice has led us to integrate some key practices around strategic foresight, or sometimes we say futures work, or people-centered design. Some people think of that as design thinking. It's, it's not quite synonymous, but definitely people-centered design is part of design thinking. So we brought some of those practices in as a way to get to a better outcome than what we've experienced in the past. So I'm going to turn it over to Fiona to explain some of the key practices and some of the key ideas that you'll encounter in our mini-session today, but also this is what we bring to the visioning process that might be a little bit different.
All right. So I just want to talk about three key practices and then three key ideas that we use to help guide our approach and our work. So we have used these phrases, strategic foresight, futures thinking, and tonight we want to sort of put a little bit more flesh on those bones, if that's not a terrible analogy to use, but, but to sort of give a little bit more sort of detail around that. And the reason we sort of think the futures piece is so critical here, it goes back to that sort of first point about not, we don't, we don't want to just solve, try and solve the problems of today, even though those are pressing, and even though those are important, and even though those still need to be solved. And our sort of, our bet in a sense is that we can solve those problems more comprehensively by thinking into the future and then coming back in terms of strategic planning to sort of think, well, if this is what we're heading towards, then how do we sort of get into the, into the details now to solve the problem? So it's not that those are being left behind, but what we don't want to do is spend a significant amount of time with everybody, working together, coming up with a great solution for the problems right now, and realizing that we've created a vision for the school district of two years ago, or five years ago. I think education's often caught in this conundrum, right? We sort of, somebody recently, and it may have been one of the people in this room, said to us that one of their college professors, when they were studying education at college, said, oh, you could take a teacher from the 1890s and drop them into a classroom now, and they'd be able to function just fine. There's no other profession in which that is true, which is a kind of shocking and interesting thing to think about. So for us, the future-thinking piece involves a few different things. So it involves imagining. Some people love that. They've been waiting for somebody to say, let's imagine what the future's like. It's kind of a, it's like blowing some air into a balloon, right? It sort of lets us all sort of take a big, deep breath and sort of think big about what we really want to be true. We also want to track weak signals. So where are the things that are sort of tickling the edge of our intuition, the things that are happening in the community, or the things that are happening in the world of education, or the things that are happening in the broader world that we think might have an impact? And we want to either get out of, ahead of that impact so we can mitigate it, or we want to harness that impact because we think it will be really beneficial. So we're going to be sort of thinking together as well about what are those things that are just beginning to, you know, they're not the things, the trends that are already there, those are the ones we want to track as well, but what are the things that are just making you think, huh, that's interesting, I wonder if there's something in there? So the other piece is empathic design. We'll do a little tiny bit of that today. Usually it's research-based, but, and some people have a natural affinity for it, and some people don't. I think we would say that people who work in education are often very relational and have an affinity for this kind of thinking, but it involves deep listening, noticing, so paying attention to those things that might not be the sort of the top-line stimuli that are coming at you, but having that ability to kind of hold back a little bit and think, oh, yeah, these things are top-line stimulating, what else is happening there? What is going on with this child? What is happening with this organization? What are those things that I really want to pay attention to? And for us as well, this kind of appreciative inquiry is a good, for us, a good tenet as well, because we like to think that any person or any system is doing the best that they can at any time with the information available and the constraints they're working with. So we like to assume best intent and then try and understand what's the inner logic that's driving this particular behavior or this particular organizational form. So we want to sort of think about that because we think if we approach that in an appreciative way, we get a better understanding of how things have come to be the way they are, and then what our resources are in a community or in an institution that can help it grow forward. The third piece, which we won't really do so much of tonight, and really will potentially do a little bit of later in the process, but we'll also sort of, that's one of those nice bridges into strategic planning and into making things happen. I think sort of making sure that there's some prototyping happening, you know, sort of in the process and towards that bridge into action. But I think this, this idea, and I think lots of people are probably really familiar with this, with this idea of sort of making your way into an idea or making your way into the future. You know, it's not, it's not a sort of monolithic thing. We're not going to sort of figure out everything, have some sort of monolithic solution, and then plonk it into the future. It's about thinking about what are the things that we need to start playing with, that we need to start trying out? What is the smallest thing we can do to make a change that gives us some information that can help us understand this better and then take the next step? So it's a kind of, it's kind of a restrained discipline in some ways, but it's also a lot of fun. And I think if you, if you ever spend time in a maker's space or do any kind of prototyping yourself, you sort of can attest to that sort of creative energy that gets really allowed to flourish when people start to prototype. So it also, just to that last word, trying, I think prototyping is also one of those great things that helps us to try something out without knowing that we're going to, you know, without fear of failure in a sense, because the stakes are so low. We take a small step, the stakes are low. So if we do fail, not the end of the world. That again is something that we have found is a kind of a hard lesson for people in education who like to do it right, because the stakes in education are so high, right? So how do we, how do we minimize that? How do we sort of soften that? Okay, so then some key ideas. Some of these ideas, you're probably familiar, guessing that, well, how many people have heard of the term wicked problems before? Yeah, a few people. Right, great. So Horst Rittel and Melvin Weber were two social scientists back in the sort of 60s, thinking of, sort of noticing the rise of technology and the rise of a sort of technological way of thinking, and seeing that there were certain problems that they knew very well from the domain of social science that just weren't amenable to that kind of thinking. So they coined this phrase, wicked problems. So these are problem areas where you'll never have enough information, the circumstance will change all the time, even while you're trying to address it. So you can never sort of get a perfect set of requirements or, you know, what, what do we need to do to fix the problem, because it's just going to keep changing. And it's a really compelling term, I think. So the ways in which we sort of like to work are sort of ways that people, that we think work best with wicked problems, because if you can iterate forward and prototype, then at least you're trying to sort of keep up with the world that's changing, rather than creating something for yesterday. Satisfying, possibly one of the world's ugliest words, and for me, this helps because it's helped me remember it, but any guesses what that might be, I know there's a term for it, I can't remember, a combination of?
Sacrificing and satisfying.
Last time I asked that question, that's what somebody said as well, sacrificing and satisfying. So it's close. So Herbert Simon combined satisfying and sufficing. So, so the idea being that your standards are high, but you're not looking for perfection. You're looking for what, what is the solution that might suffice in this circumstance that might give me, again, going back to prototyping, that might be giving me enough information to get some real good learning going, and enough information to take the next step? So I'm not waiting again to get the perfect thing before I move forward. So I'm not waiting again to get the perfect thing before I move forward. But satisfying, so it's not like any old random thing will work. It's like it's got to satisfy some key requirements. And obviously, as we'll talk about a little bit later, one of those key requirements is going to be student-centredness, right? If it's not working for students, it's not working. Final one here, progressive approximation. Arnold Wasserman is a mentor of mine and he uses this phrase a lot and it sort of links nicely with satisfying. But the idea is that you'll set, you'll set a horizon point, a vision, something you want to make in the world, and you'll start working your way towards it. And as you work towards it in iterative cycles, that's the sense of progressive approximation. You're getting closer and closer and closer to that ideal. But you'll never actually reach it again because the world's going to keep changing, right? So you can sort of let go of, the ideal is what's going to draw you forward and keep you going. But it doesn't have to be something that you're trying to attain in perfection. You're just going to keep going towards it and you'll create new goals and, and new visions as you go. So, and I'm throwing a lot of words at you right now. But some of the questions that we will maybe, we'll, we'll address it later. Okay, so we'll just move on, yeah, because we do need to catch a little bit of time. All right, so this is what we're doing. Using tools and approaches from strategic foresight, people-centered design, we want to harness your creativity and brain power and that of the broader Portland community in many different ways to create an inspiring horizon vision. And this will enable the follow-on alignment of mission and strategic, and strategies as the strategic, strategic planning process starts. So, and also to sort of hopefully inspire and enroll other organizations in the community so that students are being impacted throughout the community, not just in schools, but the, but the school district also sees that it's in an ecosystem that's student-supported. Okay, so making a climate change point maybe. Warming up to the future. So what could the future be like? We want to just take you on a little journey. I would turn the lights down, but it's the evening and it's warm in here, so they weren't. Oh, actually, before we go there, I just want to show you this, one of our favorite quotes, and I'm sure it's one that many people in this room are familiar with. Education is our passport to the future, but tomorrow belongs to the people who prepare for it today. Malcolm X. We love this and we were super excited to find this at the Portland airport.
It's a sign.
Yes, right. It is, so the first part of that, so just wanted to, to share that.
One of our favorite quotes.
Wait, 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 take a picture of that.
And so we are, there's lots of different approaches or tools that we can use to sort of give this warming up to the future idea. We like to start off a lot of our sessions at the very beginning of the journey with provocative, just push-to-the-future imagery or maybe a panel discussion. There's lots of different ways to do it. But we want to give you a mini-taste, an appetizer taste of, of a visualization exercise. So that's what we're going to do today. A caveat, I want to say, for those of us, all of us in this room who recognize diversity and representation is important. The irony of the, the, the world of whoever makes images of the future is really behind the times. So I just wanted to put that out there because you're not going to see a reflection of diversity that we would want. Ironically, the people who make these pictures up, they're not there yet. So kind of the future is behind the times. I thought that was kind of an interesting observation that I wanted to put out. Because it would, it would bother me if I sat through and looked at these images, if that wasn't actually stated up front. Okay, so a mini, and another thing I'll say is usually we'll take a little bit more time to do this exercise where we'll walk through visualization. We'll have you write things down. We'll have you have time to converse with your cable, you know, mates about what went through your mind as you thought about this. And we're probably going to not do those portions. So I'm just going to get you through a series of pictures. I'm going to read a narrative as you're looking at these pictures. It's supposed to sort of provoke some thought in your brain. We'll pause long enough for you to kind of ask yourself, what's entering my brain as she asks me that question? But then we'll probably move on without sharing in the group. I'm going to read a script twice. So the first time around, it's going to be a little bit faster. You're going to see the images. You're going to hear me pause for a brief second, ask the question. But don't worry, you don't have to think about what my answer is. We're going to go through it again. That's when you'll be able to, you know, see the image for the second time and think about what you might want to actually say. All right, so. So this is in the world in which it's the year 2030. The population of Portland has grown beyond forecasted numbers set in the late 2010s. Between 2010 and 2017, population growth in Oregon increased 74% through in-migration alone. From 2018 onwards, that trend was amplified by climate refugees from other parts of the country, seeing Oregon and Portland in particular as a potential climate haven. This has put an enormous strain on all of the city's infrastructure, including public education. This is a world in which the Atlantic hurricane season has intensified and the western states' wildflower, wild, wildfires have also intensified and the city and state governments have had to direct more of their budgets to protect and restore the coastlines and burn zones. Budgets for education continue to be negatively impacted and PPS seniors of the class of 2030, who were born in 2010 and 12, are going into a world of ever-present media, informational noise and growing economic disparity across the globe. Despite these challenges, Portland Public Schools has been able to graduate students more prepared for life, college and career than ever before. So this is in a world in 2030 in which self-driving vehicles are on the road. While self-driving vehicle access is increased through rideshare programs, services such as integrated learning platforms connected to libraries and the soul-skin in those vehicles attract families and students who have to spend increasing amounts of time on the road, commuting from schools to after-school activities to other activities to homes. For the nostalgic solopreneur drivers are offering competitively priced services, advertising a real driver at the wheel. What types of educational programming might a student or family access on these integrated self-driving vehicles? This is a world when learning at school is no longer just, just no longer just conjures up images of students walking on brick-and-mortar buildings, but includes 24/7 asynchronous holographic environments that deliver personalized and geographically untethered relationships among learners and learning facilitators. When students and learning facilitators do attend school, the learning environments are environmentally friendly. They invite collaboration and they, they're designed to support habits of mind and learning styles of all learners. Portland, a longtime leader in innovation around locally grown sustainable foods, has continued to lead the field. Food is grown at home, in communities, and in high-density, low-carbon footprint ranches. While the supply of fresh meat, fish and produce thrives through climate change planning, the food service side also continues to evolve with innovations in the food truck industry. For example, now unmanned trucks can serve up 3D-printed foods designed by local chefs, delivering a bevy of creative ethnically-influenced Portland cuisine. What types of new skills do 2030 graduates need to thrive in this type of 2030 food industry? This is a world in which DNA profiles are being used to guide everything, from nutrition to exercise advice to health and even insurance premiums. This is a world in which technology is so ubiquitous that people don't think of it as a separate thing anymore. And the lines between ubiquitous technology and self are blurred. Robots run our household functions. Biotech has enabled embedded microchips and smartphone apps to guide medical care teams, to monitor the health of their patients from afar and where physical and learning disabilities can be supported through embedded biotech solutions. How might this world need new types of careers to help the growing number of seniors to navigate the ubiquitous technology? It is a world in which the idea of going to college may no longer be an aspiration for all and in this world, and in this world, regardless of education levels, students expect to have hyphenated careers. So their palettes of skills and micro-p credentials demonstrate a wide array of abilities. Micro-p credentialing has enabled anyone to communicate and demonstrate specific skills and abilities so that someone seeking those skills can easily find a targeted talent that they want or need. The ability to market oneself in a self-guided career is enticing, especially to young people. And increasing numbers of high school students are running their own side businesses. How might the high school experience support students in developing a variety of skills and help them balance curriculum requirements with real-world skills being learned on the side? So should I read it again or do people feel like they got a sense of it?
Can you read the questions again?
Yeah, the questions were. The questions were.
We will need the questions if we're going to respond.
Yes, yes. Would you like me to go through it again?
The questions.
Okay, just the questions, okay. So when we were showing pictures of the vehicles with the integrated learning platforms in there, integrated to potentially PPS, public libraries, their schools, we asked, what types of educational programming might a student or family access Okay, then we showed a, a series of pictures around different kinds of learning, images of learning and environments of learning, where learning is now sort of 24/7 asynchronous, potentially holographic gaming, where they're connected to learning facilitators whenever they want. And even when they go to school, there's lots of rooms that support collaboration in those types of learning environments. How have these changes affected the way faculty teach? And how have faculty been supported to develop any new skills that are needed? The third question centered around food. So both some ideas around sustainable foods being at home and communities near home and in some interesting different kinds of ranches of the future. And, and food service, especially around innovations in the food truck industry and how that might be connected to 3D-printed food that can sort of really support local cuisine. So thinking about food industry going in lots of different directions like that, what types of new skills do graduates need to thrive in the food industry of that kind of future? So then we showed some images about technology. Ubiquitous, certainly more and more as time goes on. There was images of different ways to get information to medical teams, whether it's your phone app, being able to provide some data to embedded technology, being able to do that remotely. And thinking about how that world invites new types of careers that don't exist today, especially around helping seniors navigate that kind of technology. Like what would be those types of careers that don't exist today that would be needed in the future? And then last but not least, this idea that regardless of their experience in education, more and more students and sort of young people are having what we call these hyphenated careers where, and their palette of skills and what they can do really defines what they do for work. And there's a, you know, varying ability to market oneself in, in many different ways in those micro-careers. So how might the high school experience support students to develop the kinds of skills they need? Not only to balance the curriculum and learning needs that way, but also the skills that are needed to do this kind of work on the side?
Okay. So as you're making your last few notes, you will, we will come back to some of the things that you jotted down there because they'll be helpful in the exercise after this one. But first of all, we're going to do a little bit more thinking about the future. And I'm going to try and do this pretty quickly. So this is an exercise that's helping us to think about the connections between the current state and the future state. Again, some of you may be familiar with this framework. I did want to put this rudder-long quote up from one of the people who invented this approach. It says, "Transformation happens as the emergent result of everything going on in the world. There's always an emerging third horizon at every scale of life, from the individual to the planet and beyond." Well, I guess that's up to you, beyond. "Some things will be the result of conscious intent. Others will surprise us for good or ill. The way we live now was once the third horizon partly imagined and intended, largely unknown." So the third horizon, as you might have guessed, is the future. We are living in somebody's future, right? Somebody made plans for this room and the things that we do every day and we're living it. And I think the key point really to think about is that some of those things will be the result of conscious intent. And one of the things that we want to do with this work is really bring more conscious intent into the work. So, three horizons. Horizon one is the status quo and, or status quo, sorry, tomato, tomato. What we want to focus on here is those things that in the current state, and we'll say in PPS right now, that you would like to either reduce or eliminate. So that's the current, things in the current state you want to get rid of. The future state is obviously the things that we really want to have happen, things we'd like to create or develop or amplify. And then the super-interesting part is what happens in the middle, right? This is where the real juice is. So the transitional state are the elements that we want to start. So what seeds need to be planted to grow into that future or cultivate? So what are the green shoots that are already happening? Things that you might want to carry forward. So this kind of pretty, I think, straightforward little framework actually helps us think about all of those things at once, which is great. Okay, so rules of brainstorming, sure you all know them, but one idea proposed it. Use a Sharpie because it makes your writing more legible and it means it's harder to write like that. You have to print. And then this is color-coded exercise. So we're asking you to use the red color. So at your tables, so we're not going to do this in five minutes, we're just going to do two minutes. Brainstorm, so individual exercise. Brainstorm all the things you would like to eliminate, eliminate. So things, not people, things about PPS current state on the blue post-it, okay? And, yeah, all the things in two minutes. I'll take this. Okay, all right.
And one idea proposed.
One idea proposed it. Go.
Is this a project or individually?
Individually, individually. Yes, it's that.
It's always about the cookie.
How soft is it?
Oh, yeah.
So for now, just spend two minutes just writing as many ideas as you can about things you'd love to get rid of. You could press that button tomorrow or wave a magic wand or whatever it is, stuff you'd like to be gone.
And this is a part of, of my best.
If it's impactful, yeah, yeah. And this is the sort of And this is the sort of eliminate, get rid of. Okay, so let's take 30 more seconds on this. 20. And ignore the posting on the wall chart instruction for now. We will do that at the end when you've done all three, so just keep them beside you. We'll trade them with other people if you want to steal theirs. All right. So as you're finishing off those thoughts there, we're gonna go to horizon three now. So we're gonna jump into the future. So think about the future that you want. Obviously, we're just doing this in a ridiculously short amount of time. But think about the future that you want for PPS, for PPS students particularly. Brainstorm all the possible ideas, and this time on your pink post-its. And we'll take three minutes, maybe three and a half. All the things you want to be true for the future, for PPS and PPS students. Uh, sorry, we're thinking around the 2013 framework. So until further notice, 2013. So all the things that you would like to be true for PPS and PPS students by 2013. Some of which we hope would become true much earlier, but... And pink post-its for this one. One more minute? Okay, so as you're finishing up your final thought on there for now, I'm gonna really back to that transitional stage between now and the future that you want. So brainstorm the seeds that you would like to see planted. So if you think about the things you want to be true in the future, what are the seeds that might need to be planted in the next couple of years to help that happen? Or, and, sorry, seeds and green shoots. What are the things that you're already seeing maybe now? Or that are just being put into practice, just being tried out by somebody, just an inkling in somebody's head that would need to be nurtured to bring about that future that you want? And this is on the orange post-its. Three and a half minutes. So one and a half more minutes on this. Okay, if you want to finish up your last thought on that for now, I'm gonna ask you to come up and put your post-its on the sheets here in the appropriate horizon. And if possible, as you see other things going up, cluster yours with there. So if you see like ideas, put yours there. Obviously, that makes it easier for the first people up because they don't have to do that. And Rita, you may want to request somebody, deputize somebody to come up and do that for you. Yes, all right.
Pardon? I spent all day sitting in my mechanic's car.
Did they choose you?
No. I'm sure I'm not gonna get chosen most, I remember when I was in Judge Burke's rooms.
Oh, I know her.
I've known her since I was 15 and I played football, softball with him for five years in DC. He was a staff member since I was five. And then today, the guy, the judge that came in and did the... Pardon?
He knows Mitch.
The guy who came in and like created 300. It was the person who sold their house to, on Arthur, Mike Green. Mitch's son. Yeah, right on, well, Mitch lived there.
Okay, as you're up there putting your things up, have a look and just see if there's anything that you particularly noticed, anything that strikes your interest. Let's look at what you and your colleague...
They were saying every pillow in this jacket said...
She's holding the same, walking away and I'm going, this could be...
Delmore, California. It's a little beach community, it was like, okay, my last hurrah, tone cover.
And you noticed something, you just come back into that?
It's gonna flurry of a couple of books.
Yeah, different, yeah.
Okay, so just in the interest of keeping us moving forward, I'm just gonna ask for a couple of things that people noticed. Either about something you wrote yourself, a cherished idea that you put out, or something that you noticed about any patterns as you were putting stuff up on the board. Sorry, was that? Yes.
I think in the blue, there's a lot of adult centricness, right? Whether it's, I mean, someone says adult focus. There's like the stress skepticism from public, it just feels very adult-centered.
All right, so and that, so the things that people want to get rid of being more about the adults than anything else. Yeah, okay, great. Anybody else? Another couple of noticeings or some, yes?
Well, there was a lot of commonality around, there were quite a few in the get rid of were to make sure you, so racism and lack of understanding of the culture and all those kinds of things. Seems like there's a lot of consensus in the group that happens to change.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are a lot of items that quickly perceived as barriers are getting in our way of moving to the next step. Do you wanna say?
No, 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 no.
So the perception of lots of barriers, but also perhaps some agreement about what those barriers constellate around or what they're sort of focused on. What about in the, in the future? Any idea that you've put up here that you're particularly excited about? Or one that you've noticed when you were putting up your post-its and you wanna give props to the author for, anything up there? Yeah?
Well, I was excited to see, well, I didn't see a lot of it, but more of a global focus, so I was excited to see that.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you actually just read a sample set? People are still posting, so just call out a few.
Okay, so to Kimberly's point, you just made global citizens, full inclusion. Teachers using the most current methods and research methods. Transdisciplinary learning, brackets, business school partners. More focus on critical thinking and inquiry. Obviously not here, but also I wanna call out mental health supports as well. So obviously with more time, we would then start to really dig into some of these things. So what does that mean? What does that look like? What differences might that make? So all of this sort of fleshing out those kinds of things. So some of the pieces in here, I just want to, sort of the seeds and green shoots. So CTE for all. Connecting social emotional wellbeing to academic success. A diverse portfolio of educators, conscious discipline. So these are things to be cultivated. All right, so we will take good care of these and sort of fold them back into the process. But for now...
So I know this feels like moving right along, so I wanted to emphasize sort of the point I made earlier about appetizer size. And if you imagine every exercise we do where you actually get the time to digest it at your table and you get to explore these ideas first, you put it up, we actually examine themes together. We draw, you know, we draw sort of questions around, here are some common themes. All of that would occur, right? So I just wanna make the point as frustrating it might be going through these quickly. So now we're gonna go into the next frustratingly fast process. Before we do that, Kimberly.
No, I just, I didn't know we weren't gonna go through all the questions. But one thing that I was wondering about, and how does that kind of get addressed? Is I saw more, I don't know, I feel like present-day thinking in the third horizon. And so what happens when that happens?
Present-day thinking, like I already see that happening right now? But somebody's saying it needs to be in the future?
Right, it's current work now, or things that we're doing now, but they put it in the third horizon.
Well, we would explore that in the group. So somebody might raise that question and we would say, well, where is it happening? Or somebody might, you know, so we would talk about that a little bit more and sort it. I think that's the, one of the things we do is take more time as a group to do some sorting at the table first. And then you would probably come up and share what the table thought about. So there's kind of this... So there's kind of this iterative process where we get to kind of use the wisdom of the crowd to sort of figure out, you know, where does that actually fit?
So if we were weak on the, if we did, you know, re-sorting and it turned out there was a weakness in the third horizon, meaning that a lot of things shifted to first and second horizon, would there be more time to develop around?
We could, uh, but we would, again, it would just be sort of the one exercise, right? We've got multiple exercises to flesh out what could be in, and we approach it in different ways. And so we would iterate on that in different ways, yeah.
Addison, what I thought, um, sort of a challenge for the group process is, how do you, future state can't be grounded in solutions to current-made problems versus new possibilities that completely eliminate and leapfrog your current issues. So, I noticed you strategically just kind of threw out a few images and described sort of what could be a few, because you wanna free people up from their current relative point of reference around what could be, that's a little tougher to imagine right away.
Right, right.
Otherwise, you're just putting in the third column fix from the first column.
Right, right. And, and that's kind of, I didn't quite describe it well, that's what I sort of meant by iterative or different kinds of processes that would get to that over time. I know, uh, one of the other sort of benefits of a, of a, of an exercise list like this too is oftentimes people come into a session just needing to put out what's not working. So, you know, we get a chance to sort of get that captured. Let's keep moving, let's keep stretching. We might have a panel of experts come in to talk about from their perspective of what's on the weak signals of the edges. What are they experiencing now that might actually be something you're not familiar with? So it just stretches the mind more. And then the other thing that, um, you know, oftentimes we might include in our engagements are learning journeys. So thing, uh, air places that are, um, maybe exploring some ideas that, um, aren't mainstream yet, that also stretches and the idea, and we'd take groups of people there to actually not just see it, um, but also process it together and bring that back, right, to the community that's doing this work.
I can imagine that others would be experiencing this and I think this came up in a quarantine meeting, but it's like maybe because we've been either in a mindset of scarcity of resources for so long or in this feeling that things are dysfunctional or not as smooth running as they should be, people don't dare to dream what could be. And, and we have to remind people that, and the imagery is one way to do it, but you're like, give yourself permission to really dream big here. And I think when we go out to our community members, we're going to have to, I thought it was compelling when you all said that in the quarantine meeting and I think it'll be compelling for our community members to hear that. You have permission to dream big here in this process.
Yeah, yeah. And there'll be a lot more, we can sort of bring in a lot more stimuli. Obviously, we'll just give you a taste of that today, but to think, what else can we do? And then, um, one of the other things that can be done with something like this is to look at, well, you know, to really dig into, well, how long do you think that would take? And then, you know, oftentimes you find that all of those things will be kind of 2020, not 2030. So then, what would, what would sort of bring that further? What would be the next stage of that? So you've really got that sort of, that long-term vision.
If that was a seed lane, what does the actual, or third horizon look like? So we'll also at the end get a little bit of time if we have it to process this process and sort of hear about, you know, what, what each of these exercises, what does it contribute towards when we're doing kind of a vision exercise, vision process? So next, we're gonna jump into something called the persona exercise. So why use personas? And I'll just reference, you have something in front of you and that looks like a passport for the person's name on it. And so that is the persona, part of the persona exercise. Um, and so personas are really made-up composite characters. Oftentimes, we build these based on research and our experience. And this is a sample from another engagement. So we also will, you know, a lot of times, build in characteristics of a person that might be specific to a particular culture that exists in a, in an engagement, stuff like that. So just know that this is just samples from someplace else. We do this for, for a few reasons. One is, we wanna protect confidentiality and be able to openly discuss really is, issues that are, that might be sensitive by referencing a persona rather than referencing a particular individual or student that we know or family or, or, uh, you know, an educator that we wanna support. So that's one. Um, we, we intentionally design this so that they are diverse set of people with characteristics that span sort of across. They might not represent any one person you know, but the composites over six to eight people will represent much of the characteristics. And they have an additional way to sort of elicit the silent voice. So we do take some care to organize or design these personas with an eye towards them. So as you work with personas or if we sort of support facilitators working with personas, not only do you bring your own expertise, right? Everybody is an expert in their own perspectives, your own expertise, but you also might be carrying a persona with you. So it's just that extra sort of point of view that we ask you to carry. So we're gonna do a quick exercise of what it might feel like to get to know your persona. If you look around the room, you'll see little targets that look like, um, you know, spirals with names on top. So we'd like you to sort of find your persona. Cecilia Porena's here. Patrice Walker. Takemi? Is around the corner. We've got LaShonda there. We've got Nick Flores and then Jaime Munoz over there. And so, um, as you go over there, you're gonna gather with other personas that's like you. And we'd like you to just explore one of the two questions that are up there. So Jess, it might be a question about beliefs and there's a guiding question up there. Or influencers. And the question that is related to that is up there. I want, so take some post-its with you and just explore that question. What might this person's belief system be like? What kinds of things influence the way they want to learn or how they learn? Those guiding questions are up to the board. So all you need to do is kind of go up to your persona, give it life by exploring one of these questions, because we wanna save some time, influencers or beliefs. And then of course, in a, in another, in a more in-depth session, you actually would spend a lot of time exploring different characteristics of that person beyond just influencers' beliefs, like what motivates them, um, what kinds of social contexts do they live in? But for tonight, just for the appetizer taste, we'll just have everyone explore one, all right? So, any questions?
Does it matter what color it's set?
Nope, it doesn't matter. And then just post it your ideas as you talk about it as a group on your, on your target. It should be at least four of you. Remember, this is the year 2030, 2025.
How many go on a shot of Jack?
That's funny, Patrice Walker? How did we find, how did we find Patrice was in?
Oh, there's three there now. Exactly for methods like the hands-on experience of learning, talking about, because of cross-disciplinary learning as well.
Yeah, you could read it together and then just either pick, you know, exploring what, um, yeah.
She never finds the teaching as, as, as a litter.
So she believes that education doesn't just happen in school that education is all, all experiences, right? I think she believes that she can help.
Well, like, even with having to move for reasons out of their control, the fact that she focused on, it's closer to school now.
Did we say that to her in the meetings?
Yeah.
So there was something like that.
There was a, the last, second last paragraph. Just talking about facilities. There's a lot of environmental things. She had the obstacle. The community that she's living in, the delta.
So she believed originally what a lot of teachers do about it is that you're good for learning the education. There's this inspired, you know, I was up to. So she had a belief about how it happens and then she was able to change that. But I, I think when she talks about the end of the system, when it is necessarily, um... Right, it's not empowering.
Well, being a believer, she got from somewhere. And it might be...
Take it out. Yeah. I think she believes that adults stand in the way.
It's almost like real-world learning. It's like real-world learning in actual, the real world.
Right. All the seeds, like instead of necessary learning in a classroom, you're going actually to replace, you have to find friends, find class, you find a team in their actual environment. So, um, she talked about one of the things.
She has a very dense reading of the way of seeing the world. She talks about biology and, and running on the beach in a city. She talks about getting, studying science in college and then like probably get a basketball college, college. It's sort of like her mind is evolving in ways. Things are integrated in the process. The thing, we're beginning to see that with a little kid now, as they use technology to do what they need to do. Because they're a lot more integrated. They're not limited by biology, just the language. They need to integrate more organically than we ever have. And it's just gonna get even more so. That's what she appears to reflect on.
I think the flip of that, this is a thread that goes through a lot of this for her relevance. So, relevance to be handled, relevance to be taught about how to prepare the crap, not just learning about the biology. And then, it sounds like she doubts the relevance of the college experience because she thinks it would be better for her to go straight into the workforce where she can learn on the job.
Well, I mean, I think the person having hard work in here.
I'm gonna ask a question, I think, you know, but what is her belief? Talks about the multi-generational, you know, family. I mean, there's, there's kids, right? Like there that... How does she, I don't know if we can get to answer that. How does she, how does she see herself?
Right, it's like she didn't let that change her progress. Based on that, I get the impression she feels everything's all...
I think she has like a positive self.
I mean, that's like a reality of what finances sometimes.
Pushes her to, you know, the next thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's obvious.
Yeah, she had a date. So sweet.
I should probably like write this down. And I always said I was gonna commit that. But I wanted to like reserve therapy. So I'll, I always send an email and say, remember? He takes two books. He wants to read two books. He won't let it go. And I was like, this is, you know, I remember this image. So, you know. Or email that. And now I tell him, I mean, my, my mind is remembering. They just don't wanna hear that at all. I, I used to be able to know when they were walking, you know, down the hall. It's all boom, boom, boom. So I realized really quickly, I don't really wanna say that. I want you to be an angron. I guess I do want you to grow up like all at one time.
Taxco, have you been there? Uh huh, the whole, he said it's like a really cute little... Till Tuesday? But, but Taxco?
So, um, again, just another taster. A couple of things I mentioned in some of the small group. So this is kind of a picture of the whole mandala that we might have as a big wall poster. And you would take more time, obviously, exploring this person's social, cultural context, motivators, actions, and other things that you come up with. We also encourage people to give this person life beyond what's written on their post, on their post-passport. So really just, you know, explore other characteristics that might not even be written. So then we would actually carry that persona or have you carry that persona back to your table and throughout the rest of the day, whatever the activities might be, we might actually represent that person's social, cultural context, influencers, motivators, actions, beliefs, and other things in other activities throughout the day, like the one Fiona's gonna do next.
So how do you go about creating that persona? Like, do you, you as consultants do that? How, how does that work?
We've done it different ways. So there's, we have, you know, no set way that we do it. Fiona, do you wanna talk specifically about how these were created?
Yeah, so, um, so these ones were created, they were research-based, so they were based on lots of interviews, not just interviews from the community in which we did that particular work, although some of them were based on interviews from the community. But we sort of added to those things that from, um, basically over a decade of interviews, sort of kind of themes that keep coming up, um, in certain communities and certain sort of school districts. So it's a kind of composite, composite interview material. But other times, we will, depending on who's in the room, if we're, if we're working particularly with, um, with educators who are either still in the classroom or pretty close to the classroom, oftentimes we'll say, um, we've done this with groups that come from particular schools, to think about, um, some students they know. If there's a particular topic that they really want to think about, some students that they know, that they have sort of shared information about, not just one student, but a few different students, and then sort of create some composite characters out of them. not just one student, but a few different students, and then sort of create some composite characters out of them so that they're using their knowledge of the student that they relate with regularly to create composite characters as well. So that's another way. So we sort of say it's a combination of research and/or experience. That's, that, those are the kind of the feeders into that process. So, so there's a process where we can kind of create them and present them like this in a passport. We can do it completely like from scratch with a group and we can do some combination. Does that help? All right. So in the interest of speeding through everything, we're going into the scenario exercise. So, and I realize we're gonna use the word scenarios in a few different ways this evening. So in these scenarios, we're thinking about different stories of the future, different descriptions of different possible features. So they help us explore the kind of, the nuance of the kind of narrative form helps us to explore kind of mutual impacts of different, different ideas. Helps us to sort of think about context without being committed to a particular context. So we have that sort of slight distance of the author to the material, you know, as we think about that story. And they enable us to consider different options, including hybrid options. And again, as with the personas, they can be sort of created by our team and presented, or they can be created sort of from, from the blank sheet in a, in a, in a workshop. The interesting thing about sort of helping people to think about the hybrid options is that's often the kind of thing. So people like to pick and choose a few different things from different scenarios to say, well, you know, maybe a future that looked a bit like this would be the one. So. Wait, my. Okay. So, so what we want you to do now, you've had a chance to talk with other people who are like you as your persona. And depending on the degree of narcissism in the persona, you might have gone really well, why not? Oftentimes we'll take the groups into thinking about scenarios from their persona group, their homogenous persona group. So in your group of La Chanda, you might have all thought about a scenario together. And then you might go back to your table and meet all the other people at your table and then think about that same scenario. So you get a sense of how different impacts work for different people. So what we're gonna do now is we're just gonna use, obviously, these are not from Portland, but I'm gonna assign scenarios to groups just to kind of keep us moving. Want you to, this is, you know, two sides of paper, so we want you just to take some time to read through that each. So I'm gonna say Delta Learning Region for this group, Pittsburgh Global for that group, Delta Learning Region for you guys, and Pittsburgh Global for you. We're gonna leave the last one out, it's too specific, but these hopefully will have a bit more interest for you. So Delta Learning, Pittsburgh Global, Delta Learning, Pittsburgh Global. So take time to read through the scenario. You've got one sheet on your table, so you can. One option is for one, one person to read that out to the others. We have a couple of extra copies here, so we can also distribute those around. And then when you've got, when you've sort of read through the scenario, we want you to think about your own persona. What would they need? Either their own skills and mindsets plus supports from the outside. What would they need to thrive in that particular world? So, and capture those thoughts on post-its at your table. So you'll go round. And I think what we'll do is read the scenario first and then do a quick introduction of, of yourself from your persona. So my name is La Chanda Chapman. I am. And just tell us one of the, one of the beliefs or influences that came out at your, at your mandala work. So just introduce yourself that way and then you can start thinking about and talking about how, what you might need in that future world that you just read about. Is that clear? Any questions? All right.
Fiona, do you have extra copies?
Yes.
So you were Delta.
How did you get here? Different indices emerge to make program aspects of education. For student help models, so the program for entire student-based, accessibility, educational. Measure the level of science, mathematics, and the individual's individual potential to play a game. Created an international standard associated with low down as well as virtual. I don't know. The tag global. You wanna reach your own. Being. Students want to. They take online. Identify. If the test. Or if somebody. By the lawyers. Older students are expected to. More choice on the free. Why should this? Teacher, help you to. Uh, local. Study what. Local system. The higher level. Also. I know. The high level. Experience. In cities. Pittsburgh Global. They're getting asked. According to. Together. We get earning. Oh, I don't. And that's demonstrated. These meetups have. So. That's always part of the core students. But it's critical. Learners also working groups to collaborate on projects. Teach and share. Being a peer tutor. Tutor is a part of the conversation, experience and support. Learners of teaching. Both concepts of knowledge, developing. Every single. The. Measure the. Women. Learners. Wise variety. They help to identify. Highly customer. The experience being skills changing them with it. Role in the teacher. Says. Facility or twenty fourteen. Pretty robust. I'll admit. Long time. Our own students. And I was like. Helped kids who have never left.
So, um. I am. I am. Experienced.
Certainly has changed.
You know. I am African American. So I. Uh, one of my.
It's better than these things. They're pretty to look at. The environment. That's to let myself.
So. Just introduce yourselves. I mean. Talked about. This.
Coming from. To. Became a sister.
May not be ideal. Hard types. I have to say.
What drove me to.
Localler now. Location. Which one? She was seeing. One of that sister. I think it's. But she fully regained. This was one.
So you've been your. Characteristic.
Room mirrors that love to. Never. About one or six. City Institute, a series of. She's also. And this. Um, all right. Oh, Patrice, sorry. Patrice Walker. And I enjoy science, technology.
Um, I'm also.
I also enjoy sport. And I also have strong relationships, both in school and outside of school, and those are important to me.
I am Patrice Walker. And I come from a long line of women who will break point guards. So basketball is important to me. But even more important is that my educational experiences that have resonated most of the cases that are hands-on and experience and all. So even though I probably could get a basketball scholarship to play at college, I'm wondering if it might not just be better to go straight into the workforce and learn on the job. But this thing.
I would enjoy getting to know. I do have a curious mind and like exploring different things. But I enjoy being able to learn in a variety of different settings because it's originally. Now. Like there. Getting into nature and exploring, and being in a virtual space all the time.
So I was.
It's tired, isn't it? Hi. You look good. And I'm Mexican American. She, she does like. Hi, May. He works at the church. In light of the fact that it would be opportunity to go together. They're described. Checkers. So. You know, he's kind of. Satisfied. Cause I like sports. Chances is, who's athletics is like the highest. Future.
That was short. Yeah. So. And we're a business. And I have three kids. Two kids just starting. Life on. I live in. But not in classroom. So. And his son is very. So he worked. About thirty-five. So he's something. And I realized that he was national. So I'm running down to my address, which was US, recycling business. And we've been, we've been to. And very much that's where.
Hello. I'm twenty-eight years old. That's.
And I'm at a high school. Good student.
Programming. High school. Whereas. And.
I think, well, I was just, I was thinking that. I think in many ways this model would make sense. Because especially around the. A lot of opportunities for experience around it. I think where she, I might struggle a bit is schooling is also important. So, you know, star basketball player, I love hanging out with my friends after basketball practice. And most of what, some of the things that I can recall about learning moments from here because it was because we're a teacher. So is this model gonna be as teacher-centered and maybe uncomfortable with? And will I have this school I did or will it be bouncing around everywhere? Will we even have that? That would make me.
Yeah, I would say. I, I feel like the.
I need an opportunity to.
I also. Yeah, so it's bigger about that, the dynamics.
I hope you produce that biology and psychology. Honestly, they don't seem to. In athletics. And the relationships. They are from the basketballs. Have helped develop my interest and I'm quoting my interest, which was important.
Okay, take five more minutes with.
...you're thinking a little bit. And so obviously, in terms of knowledge, there's core academic knowledge. Everybody sort of comes to that really quickly. But then there's other things that you might think about, like environmental literacy could be a piece of knowledge, or media literacy, or financial literacy. The reason why these are actually color-coded a little bit differently, we actually had the opportunity to sit and listen to the student panel at the Leadership Institute. And we're listening for things that they said they wanted around knowledge, skills, and dispositions. So those are actually in blue. You might actually remember these being said by some of the students. But I remember one saying, "The future is digital people." Like, "I want to know, I want to have technology literacy." And then also, I want to be able to, it's important for us to learn how to understand different perspectives of people with diverse backgrounds. So these were out of the student panel. Skills, so the Cs, right? Communication, collaboration, critical thinking, leadership as a skill. Again, out of the mouth of one of the panel members, we heard, "I want to be able to tell powerful stories because that's going to enable me to do what my passion is about." And then dispositions and mindsets. So growth mindset, I know, talked about a lot within education. There's this idea that you have a digital identity, but it's also local and global. So there's local identity, global identity, and digital identity. So maybe those are some dispositions and mindsets that we help students develop. Sense of purpose or spark, you know, when they get that spark and they get that sense of purpose, like, everything else starts aligning around that. So how do we help students gain that sense of purpose and spark? A student said, "Know my passion, help me understand what my passion is." And then also, students recognizing that whatever it is they need to be prepared for, they know they have to be prepared for change. Like, there's nothing more, you know, constant than change. So tenacity and resilience to change is a disposition and mindset I want to have when I leave this district. So with those examples, now let's turn to sort of some individual, right?
Yeah, so individual first.
Yeah, so just, we have, let's do five minutes? Four minutes? Three minutes? We're doing three minutes of individual writing on your own first. If you could color-code them, pink for skills, blue for knowledge, orange for disposition and mindsets.
And this can be about students broadly, so you don't have to think about from your own persona, you can step aside.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
No, let's just go more...
Yeah, students broadly, yeah. For this exercise.
Maybe triggered by some of the things that come out in that?
Yeah. Well, we can put different hats on, right?
Yeah.
As long as it's done in three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. So brainstorm on your own. Ideas about skills that students would need in the future to thrive, knowledge, and dispositions Okay, so go ahead and finish maybe the thought that you're just writing on, on your last post-it. And in the interest of time, we're going to sort of skip the table discussion. Jonathan's all ready to come up here and start putting his post-its on the woodchairs. Okay, so when you're done with putting yours ideas on post-its, I invite you to come up to the same location as the Verizon chart earlier and place your post-its there. And if you notice any like ideas, as you are coming up later in the group, please cluster So those of you that are talking up a little bit later and have the benefit of seeing some of the other ideas, maybe you can notice something that is surprising or interesting or you see a pattern. I'd love, we're going to sort of see if somebody could volunteer to name what they might notice. Thank you.
I wanted to pose.
Yeah.
It would have been rather much.
Luckily, it's, that's a flexibility.
Yeah.
That was stiff.
Seriously.
I mean, my grad students.
She just...
I did.
I was thinking, I was thinking, I was thinking.
So my grades are very hard.
I'm taking so much.
Yeah.
She's all right.
She's a micro.
She'll be a teacher.
My communist.
or surprises, or any noticing they might have had that they want to share with the group. Yes?
So under, I think, I think it's skills, right?
Yes.
So we have a need, or we believe there's a need to be in community globally. And there's in writing, there's verbally and different languages. We also think it's important for, to have critical thinking, analysis, and data interpretation.
Yep.
We also talk about some technical skills that need to be in place. And who was one other big one that was there? Oh, maybe able to do a lot with others, you know, relationship building, human capacity, human capacity.
Right. Anybody else? Yes, Camille.
I thought that it was interesting that there's a juxtaposition between the need for, under skills, the need for collaboration and self-approbation, to being able to work independently. And then, shout out to the author that said, "The ability to speak up for yourself and others." Oh, well, yeah. That was pretty...
Was that my box?
What the white show?
Yeah, great. Well, so we discussed in one of our earlier conversations was, in thinking about the future, with information so available that kids and teachers really don't have to be like content holders, and I think that kind of shows itself here in the amount of knowledge because people have access to knowledge. But what's becoming much more important in the future would be the skills and then the dispositions, and especially those employability skills that the employers talk about wanting kids to have. They always call on their skills or dispositions and mindsets and not necessarily so much in that technical knowledge. Yep, yep. So, thank you for that. And, you know, it's amazing when we do this with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people, the amazing themes that come out. There is this wisdom in the crowd, definitely, when you, when you sort of enlist everyone from within the community to do an exercise like this. It's, it's, it just speaks volumes in terms of the themes that come out. There is definitely, you know, wisdom in doing it with lots of people. And so imagine, so we, you know, doing this with students, the topic of students, but also thinking about, oh, I guess I already had it, students need to be supported by adults, right, to gain those knowledge, skills, and dispositions. And oftentimes, I don't know where your buttons are, so I don't know where the back button is. Oh, there it is. So oftentimes, we think about educators and what kinds of supports they would need to gain the knowledge, skills, and disposition to support students, to gain those students. But I think we also can't forget, sort of, I would just say, other supporting adults, right? There's a cadre of people that support not just the other educators, but also the students. So whether they're families, parents, also community members, community organizations. We think about that cadre that kind of even nurtures and supports all of that with student at the center. We can come up with some knowledge, skills, and dispositions that they need to be nurtured and supported to build as well. So again, all sort of supporting that student around the center. So that's a taste of personas, right? On dispositions. So this is the last mini appetizer that we're going to have a taste of tonight. And then we'll do a little debrief hopefully about this process and just get your thoughts about, you know, what did you find powerful about this process? What was concerning? What kinds of thoughts do you have about, you know, what would happen with community goes through a process like this with us? So that's part of the design and thinking that we'll do together and explore, right? So system shifts. So here's a thought about, you know, if we want sort of to change outcomes in a system, requires shifts in the current system. And the assumption there is that we need those required shifts because the system that is currently in place is designed perfectly to produce the results that it currently has. So if you want to change those outcomes, you actually have to shift the way the system operates. So determining what those shifts are, of course, is, and I would call it the scope, sequence, and syncopation of the system shifts, you know, is the tricky part, right, the important part. So we're just going to do another example, and I love that word syncopation because oftentimes that's the, that's the key. So we're going to explore two example system shift buckets that we might explore, right, as a, as a group. And so I offer these two questions. What are the characteristics of a system where every child feels connected to a caring adult in their learning and growth, and every adult feels able to connect to those students? Right, so if we explore this question, what kinds of from-to system shifts might we think about, right? And then the second bucket, in what ways can learning become more student-driven and real-world relevant? So I just happened to pick these two. We would explore the kinds of system shift guiding questions we would want to explore in this particular, for Portland, I just pulled these out from another engagement. All right, so here's the process. You might have noticed that I walked around and put out some sentence strips in your table groups. Let's use these sentence strips to capture ideas that's in response to that potential system shift question. You have four, so two for each system shift. And we'd like you to frame that system shift as a from-to statement, right? From, yeah.
So I think in touch, we're talking about...
Okay. One?
Two.
One each?
One each.
One each, okay. So this is a taster, one each. So frame your questions as a from-to statement, and then put your response in a system shift, I mean, on a, on a sentence strip. And then we're going to have you come up here and place them under one of these questions. So you'll see other groups' responses to that system shift question. So, you go back to the system shift questions. So here are the two, just in your groups. One response with, from a from-to statement, in a from-to statement form, for each of these questions, and thinking about where you want to come from and where you're going to. Four minutes.
It's like so weird, four minutes.
It's a design flaw.
Design flaw, no educators on this table.
We manage that.
Yeah, so one, one sentence, so if you sort of think about ways in which this parent system, every child might participate in a project, one of those things, and what might, or what might go, what might happen, and that's the problem for the two.
So is it from the...
One response shared, so if you're going to call there, anything, teacher, my count.
It's not, 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 it's
So that's what that work is a little bit like, right? So Fiona's looking at me like, you are over nine o'clock, so I am going to say we're done with system shifts, at least for now. Yes.
All right, so, share more. Do we have, like, one or two minutes to do a quick debrief, or no? Yes? Okay. Okay, Superintendent Durer, one or two minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we have some questions up here. We'll just do this super quickly, but is it, just any sort of reflections or feedback for any of those questions, or any other comment that you want to make about the students' work?
I think with any one of these examples of some of the exercises, you could see how this would provoke a whole lot of conversation, with the variety of people around the table to kind of explore a lot of these topics. I mean, each one of them could be their own obsession in many ways. And of course, sort of funneling it all into some synthesized sort of response, sort of the exercise. It gave us a good glimpse at just sort of examples.
I'd like to add to that. I think it would give an opportunity and to, to voices of the ones silent in situations like this, and make them help to add some to the conversation and feel that, that they are finding, they need to find, and have stakeholders.
Yeah.
Sorry, Camilla.
Yeah, so this is a opportunity slash concern, is that I would also like to see an opportunity for each individual to reflect on what role they play in the process, whether that's inhibiting us from moving forward, or, you know, the role is big a part of the change. So just that reflective piece on, you know, what you're doing now.
Yeah, yeah. So making that invitation for people to reflect on that, which could be very broad, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
At some point, I felt like I, as someone who knows a little bit about education, like, struggled to even think what it would be like in 25 years. And so I really liked how the scenarios helped me kind of picture, like, okay, this digital, what do they call it, like, badges, you know, and how that might make a high school transfer was totally different. And so for parents who may not have much knowledge of the educational system themselves, I think where we have, like, you know, this is what an exploding system might look like, could also help really trigger it. Otherwise, I think it might be hard, not knowing the system, to walk in and be like, oh, let's have these digital badges and different, you know, micros. Yeah, so I think at least having a mix of open-ended and, like, hey, what can you do about this big idea? Can really help.
Yeah, great, thank you. So what about any of the, oh, I was gonna say, what about a board member? Perfect, thank you.
So this is a concern, or interesting thing to discuss, is that I thought many of the personas and the projected futures were pretty utopian, or they at least seemed to. Again, you could explore it in ways like, you know, the hyphenated career thing, to me, is pretty dystopian. It says somebody who's really scrambling to make a, making a living and is doing an Uber thing here. I mean, what we have today with those kind of things are Uber and Jack, Rabbit, or whatever. They're crappy jobs in terms of pay. And, and there's an absence of politics with a small P, power. I mean, we see kids every day who are getting crushed by the system. Things are getting worse in this world in many objective ways. And so this seems not as rich as what's going on in the world, in that sense. So I know, is that, does that make sense? And I don't know how you, how you, but.
Yeah, well, I have a, just a, and I know we don't have a lot of time, a couple of quick responses, and I know there's a couple.
And I know this was like.
Right, yeah. But I think to, to, to the, to the piece about, you know, is it too utopian? I know one of the things that we, we sort of, I think, this is our bias, that we want to do in a, in a, in a sort of big community process, is definitely give people space to talk about the things that aren't going well, and to be very clear-eyed about that. So I think, so I think that's important. And if we think about the things like hyphenated careers, it's really important to think about, there's a huge amount of precarity and exploitativeness in those worlds right now. But what would it be like? Because it's not true for everybody, right? There's definitely young people already who are sort of, we might say, piecing together a different kind of career path. But actually, some of them are really choosing to do that. And I think sort of thinking about, well, this is not one or the other of those things, right? These are possibilities that could go one way, where somebody could have that sense of endless precarity. Or they could go another way, where somebody might think, well, what do I need to actually make a thriving life for myself? And maybe do two or three jobs at the same time? None of which is like the, the sort of, the long-term, well-paid, union, you know, well-reimbursed career, you know? So, so what, what would the school experience need to do to give people the resilience, the skills, whatever they might need, to make that a good experience rather than a bad one? So I think, and I think the sort of, you know, working things like scenarios as a way to sort of really work into those nuances, to sort of, because you could have two personas, one of whom's having the terrible experience, and one of whom's trying to do it differently, or you could show a narrative that changed that. So I just wanted to kind of plant that seed. And then to, sorry, no, there was something else that you said I wanted to respond to, and I can't remember what it was. It'll come back, okay. It'll come back in our conversations at some point. Julia, yeah, oh, sorry, Julie, Julia, then Julie, yeah.
Okay, so one concern I had is just in, like, the archetypes or the personas, there wasn't like a struggling or sort of disengaged student, at least, I didn't run into one. And I think that's gonna be, that's one of our biggest challenges.
Yeah.
So if you have just all these self-motivated personas, then we're gonna be missing a big chunk. And then what I appreciated, other than the hyphen, in a positive way, is the diversity of sort of thought that came out of the group. So people with just different experiences, like just going up and looking at the wall and saying, like, oh, that's a great idea, or just, you know, would have never thought of that. So having, so the richness of people with just different backgrounds and experiences contributing, you know?
Yeah.
My question is around, when you've done this before in other communities, you know, what about the diversity in communities? So when you were working across language groups or immigrant families at all, just how, how to respond, or how you make it kind of culturally aligned with where they're at and their world views? So I'm just curious what your experience has been.
Yeah, that's a great question, I think. So a couple of things that have happened is always with a meeting like this, there've been translators in the room, so that people could, obviously, we can translate materials ahead of time, but they want to catch the discussion as well. So we've had real-time translators in the room. I will say, we have not yet worked in a community that has five languages, languages that are translated in real time, but, you know, open to, open to working with you to figure that out.
So have you worked also as much with economic diversity? Because we have so many, you know, immigrant communities too.
Yeah.
I just think we have a lot of things to be really aware of, and how, what we choose, and then how that's going to translate across communities. And I'm not just speaking language-wise.
Right, yeah. No, it's, it's a, it's a really important point. And I think in the, in most of the districts we've worked in, there's been a range. Some have been very, there've been huge disparities, and others that have been, sort of Pittsburgh stories, you know, Pittsburgh's a pretty, a pretty sort of blue-collar community generally, it's, but there's still some range in there. And I think, you know, one of the things we want to do is make people feel that they can contribute and participate. So we want to make sure they feel as allies in the room, people that they know and can work with, that the language support is there, obviously. But also that it's a welcoming place, where people don't feel like, oh my God, I'm sort of suddenly in this room of people that I would never spend time with normally, and I don't know if I want to actually, you know, participate. So, so there's a lot of thinking about how we do that, how we make people feel welcome. So, you know, but I think the value of this, the kind of the possibility here, is that it's, it's very easy for all of us to stay in our own little bubbles, whatever those bubbles are. I'm going on a bit too much, so, but I did some work a few years ago with a gang devotion program, and interviewing one of the workers there, he said to me, these kids have really sheltered lives. And I was kind of, you know, it took me aback, because when I think about sheltered lives, I think about people being cosseted and, you know, like, looked after too much, or whatever. So, you know, that was an eye-opener for me to think, oh, yeah, there's this, there's this kind of, you know, so, so his work was, was sort of opening up the world a little bit for, for these young people, so they could see other options. So there was a reason why I came up with that, and I can't remember why this number, sorry, nine o'clock, right?
I mean, I, I just, I would point to the phase one of the, or the needs analysis report that you all received, right? We talked to, and you did a lot of, some of these exercises with, you know, migrant worker, migrant parents, you know, parents with, students with disabilities, native students, native parents, yeah. And so we've, we've begun to kind of have initial kind of entry into, you know, what would this, these type of conversations happen, you know, in a room with, you know, black parents and, you know, black students, and students, you know, who are parents who are migrant, you know? And so, so they started to kind of experience that, and so here in the, in the region.
So just one more quickly, so do you put them all together, or are they, like, separated by language groups, or just? I guess we can talk about the logistics, I'm just curious, so. Because I'll let other people.
I think one of the, one of the things the core group has talked about too, and this might be helpful, Julie, is to make this list of our stakeholders that we want to get in front of.
Yeah.
And then try to go through and figure out what is the best way to do that.
Right.
Because we know that we're gonna have to have a, a unique approach for, for some stakeholder groups, and it will have to differ from others. So we're kind of in the process of beginning to build that list and figure out what's the best way to get in front of those folks, to get their input.
Okay.
And we welcome any feedback any of you all have.
Always. Yes. So I think we probably should wrap up and transition to the next part of the evening. I just want to say thank you all for, for going with us on this kind of whistle-stop tour of a few different things. And I think you should all give yourselves a round of applause for, for doing this tonight. So we're gonna shift the tables a little bit. We're going to transition into the, the board discussion about some different options around the, just the big picture of stakeholder engagement. Did you want to say anything about the staff?
No, let's keep it rolling along.
Okay. All right, so let's just take a couple of minutes for.